And so without going into a whole lot of examples of it, I do want to offer not an original idea, but one particular issue that affects the homeless and is affected by the rest of us and to the rest of us is that we have trash issues. And a lot of our homeless, I believe, want to be good stewards of their trash, but can't because we have our garbage cans locked. And our business owners have reason for that. I'm not criticizing them, but I think we should have a new idea about what our responsibility is for opening our trash cans, subsidizing our trash cans, making the trash have an opportunity to get to the trash can rather than having us pay people to pick up the trash that should be in those dumpsters to begin with. And I have other ideas, none of them I've been talking about for years. I'm always available if the commissioners ever want to be more invested in eliminating homelessness in our county. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Rondo.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming this morning. Paula Latassa, is she available? Okay, we do have a letter from Paula. Apparently she's not going to be speaking to you. She's not online, is she, on Zoom?
We have Paula Simone on Zoom. Is that correct?
Maybe.
That's all right.
Okay. All right. So Paula, we do have your letter. Thank you very much. And I do believe it's coming on our agenda shortly. Okay, then we do have Craig Chenoweth. Would you like to speak, please, on the Simpson property, RFP? And we did have, I believe it was, we have about 41 letters on this now at that point? There's a couple more. Oh, no, we had 29, so we have 31 now. Thank you, Craig.
Okay, perfect. For the record, Craig Chenoweth, address 1945 Southwest Forest Ridge Avenue, spoke a little bit last time about this RFP and just wanted to come back and well, one, thank Commissioner Adair for coming out yesterday and just looking at the property and walking through the property and building some familiarity with it. As you can see with this, you know, we're not asking, we're not trying to derail the RFP. We're not asking you to withdraw the RFP and do nothing and keep this open space. We recognize affordable housing is an important component. All we're asking for is some minor additions to this RFP to ensure that there is good quality product that goes into this and it fits in within the existing neighborhood, the existing community that surrounds it and takes into consideration some of the elements. You know, we don't want to take this process and send it down another path and mislead you that that's where we're wanting to go. We're just asking for some consideration on this. And I think you have your stable of experts that can help you do this. And, you know, we'd like to think that we're not in here trying to steer you in another direction, but maybe add to a stable of experts or someone that lives in the area and others that live in the area and have considerations for this. So we're trying to get involved in the process. We're trying to be good advocates on all parts of it. And all we're asking for is you to partner with us or Neighborhood Association and the citizens of the community that live within this area and maybe the larger community too, because there is value even if you drive over there and can appreciate the natural aesthetics there and the natural topography. So all we're asking for is a little bit of partnership and to listen to us. And I think it's important to go slow to go fast in this time. You know, you have people on there that can guide you to add a few extra criteria that I think will end up with a very solid product. You know, some of the comments you guys have had is, hey, this is going to be, the RFP will go out, we'll sell the property, and then it will be dictated by the City Bend Development Code. I don't think there's a lot of citizens that have a lot of, I guess, confidence in the development code in the city right now and that it'll produce good products. I mean, if we're looking at this property's change under the new, some of the new amendments tied to temporary housing, shelter, whatever you may need, but I think we have the ability to meet everyone's goals here. So I would ask that you please reconsider, amend, or withdraw the RFP to consider some of the criteria that we've thrown out there with scale, compatibility, preservation, and ask for proposals that are in line with the existing area. So thank you very much, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
No, thank you, Craig, and thank you for your taking the time yesterday to give me my tour. So I appreciate that.
Absolutely. I think there's, I don't know if others want to speak, but I saw a few other blue papers.
I do have Dana Wilson. I have something. Would she like to speak now?
Thank you. First, I want to just say this is the, actually, the first time I've been involved in the public process from this side of the table. And it feels new, and I have an appreciation for the courage that it takes for people to bring issues forward. I'm familiar that you, as the board, have a lot coming at you. You're bombarded with so many emails, so much citizen input, all sorts of issues, and that your challenge is to balance the needs across the county. I get that. I know that you provide direction to staff, and I've heard just yesterday that there's no intention to pull this RFP. There's no intention to add additional criteria that we've been asking for. We've had a little bit of your time, which is, I really appreciate, but as Craig said, just including a few more elements to make sure that the county gets out of this what they want and that this community is being served with what we think is important. We believe in affordable housing. We believe that there is a need in our community for this, but what we don't want is things that are out of scale with the community that totally disengage the public involvement process. I was told by county staff that the public involvement process is only important after the RFP closes. Does that make sense to anyone here, that you should just go ahead and let things happen until it's too late to influence it? I was told that this board has no influence over the outcomes, that it's up to the city and Bend Development Code to determine what happens next. And if this board decides that we've made this too difficult or raised our voice too high and made too much of a pain for you, you're going to pull the RFP and put it out on the public market and let whatever happens, happen? That doesn't make sense to me. We're here now before it's a problem. We've tried to engage you respectfully and proactively. I know that a lot is happening, and maybe you weren't aware that the public would have this type of response, but don't be fooled that just because a few of us are here, not that we have a massive contingency, you don't want the Hundle Road group out here, you don't want the protest on your doorstep when it's too late. It's hard to come in front of you. It's hard to take time off to organize, to write your thoughts down, to have an intelligent, articulate conversation. People don't have time to do it, but that doesn't mean that they're not involved in this process. So I know that the first week we knew about it, you had seven emails. You had probably dozens more that went to the wrong email to get on the official record. All right, that was on us. We didn't know the process. We didn't get people into the right channel. But you've seen after just another week, 30 or 40 more. This is not just a little issue. It's not just a few people. It affects our entire community. So if you're not going to pull the RFP, then show us that you've heard us. Evaluate this. Instruct your staff to evaluate this. They get the direction from you. They're pointing back to us, saying it's your job. You're pointing to the city. I mean, everybody's doing a little bit of this. Take the time. Like Craig said, go slow to go fast. This is important. You can make a legacy. You can do something good. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Thank you for that, using your time down to the last second. That was perfect. And I do want to correct, including you and Craig today, we do have 31 in opposition. So 31, and I do appreciate hearing from you. I know we all do. And thank you for stepping up. I mean, it is your neighborhood. It is your community. So it is heard, and we do pay attention.
And I want to thank you also. I mean, you know, we all, you see the big picture. I mean, this was a rezone that happened previously a couple of years ago, and then, you know, it's just land that's available for housing. We did open up without a lot of parameters on this, and this is the response. So thank you for getting engaged, and let's work together as a community on this.
Thank you. Okay.
What I'd like to say on this is the county, in this case, is a property owner. We are not the land use authority that guides development in this area. That is the city of Bend. And I am very appreciative and sympathetic to the concerns that have been raised about what could potentially come out of this request for proposal. But I do want to just make the lanes clear and emphasize that the city is the land use authority here. And to make our process better, I guess one of the things I would suggest or propose is that we actually bring the city into the process of our decision-making on how we're going to deploy this, this seven acres. And I don't know whether that means we, you know, continue to collect proposals from the current RFP and engage, you know, an entity like the city's Affordable Housing Committee in the review and evaluation of those proposals, or whether we, you know, pull this RFP back, do a different one with more engagement from the city on it. But clearly, the community wants the property owner and the land use authority to coordinate in the approach to this property. And so that's, from my perspective, that's what we would need to do moving forward with this.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the room that I don't have your blue sheet to speak? Is there anyone on Zoom?
I'm sure I am.
Do you? Okay. Yes. Okay, so is it Eric?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yeah, Houston.
Houston? Okay. Would you like, you have three minutes?
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot more to add. If I should start, my name's Eric Houston. I live on 1863 Southwest Noel Avenue with my wife. I've owned the property there for over 20 years, and I've actually lived in the neighborhood on and off since the 80s, so been in the hood for quite a while. I just want to voice the concerns, the same concerns that Craig and Dana have, just that we don't speed through the process, that we kind of go out and look at the land, see what's there. I think we have a good op, I mean, there's no, I mean, everyone in the neighborhood knows it's going to be built on at some point, so that's not the issue. It's just what we build there. You know, it's a long, narrow strip of land, not a whole lot of space, but what's there? There's a lot of trees there, and some of the proposals we saw there would pretty much require leveling the whole area. That's a loss of a lot of trees and a lot of landscape there. So I think we have an opportunity right now in the planning process to try and incorporate some of the natural features there, save some of the trees, and kind of work with the neighborhood and kind of blend it to scale. Just because there's enough space there to build six four-story apartments and 355 parking spots doesn't mean we should build that. I think some, looking at some of the proposals they had there with smaller units incorporating some natural features might work out quite well, but, and then there's also the issue that, you know, when I bought my property and met everyone else in the neighborhood, it was zone residential, and it was pretty much a built-out residential place. You know, there was considered, there was a strip of land on two sides, it was kind of considered to be a buffer zone, and, you know, we knew at some point it'd probably be built on, but, you know, it's happened pretty quick. All of a sudden, now we have the college going in, and we, it got rezoned, now it's RM. And then even in our residential neighborhood, now with the state land use laws, you can apparently build multiplexes on your properties. So, I mean, it's put a lot of stress, even in our neighborhood, it's a small neighborhood, but that's already happening. So that's pretty much all I have to say about that. But anyway, I just thought we'd just kind of respect the process and try and take a slow approach and work with the neighborhood and try and build something to scale that will fit in with the community and so.
Oh, Eric, thank you so much. And I do think I'll grab that phrase, go slow to, go slow so you can go fast. As someone who's ridden horses, you always have to go really slow for a while, and then, you know, then you can go faster. But I do appreciate your comment. Michelle, did you want to speak? Michelle Houston, I'm sorry, I didn't use your last name.
My name's Michelle Houston, and I'm not a public speaker at all, but it was important for me to be here today to support our neighborhood. And I thought, I just wrote down some thoughts that, recognizing that change is inevitable, and we recognize the need for affordable housing in Bend, but when considering the development of that land, I'm hoping that the county and future developer will be mindful of how the design will affect our future, our neighborhood. I hope that some of the trees that took years to grow and some of the rock-out croppings and trails can be saved and incorporated into the new design. Once the forest is gone, it's gone. Our neighborhood is one of smaller homes or Bend bungalows. We hope that when considering the future development, the size and scale of the new homes will be in keeping with the existing neighborhood. We hope when choosing how many homes will be built, that the developer will be mindful of the parking situation and remain realistic in regards to how many units and homes can be built. Ultimately, we just hope you'll be able to choose a plan that blends into the existing landscape and preserve as much green space as you possibly can. We appreciate your consideration and time.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Michelle, for coming and speaking. That's great.
Yeah. Commissioner DeBong? One-minute response, is that possible?
Okay, 30 seconds, please.
Yeah.
Oh, it's just in response to Commissioner Chang's comments, and I don't think we're trying to, we don't need to pull in all the organizations. We're not asking the Land Use Review Board to marry together with the commission to write this RFP. All we're saying is some consideration on the design, so you get the design with the best outcome. We don't think this needs to be an overweighted process that needs to be bogged down. We simply ask for a little bit of amendment and consideration. So I just wanted to add that, that by no means are we saying we need to get the city involved and need to get the Land Use Review Board to come together with you guys to produce good product. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Do we have, okay, everyone in the room that's wanted to speak is spoken this morning? Okay, do we have anybody on Zoom?
You'll be at the time?
No. Okay, no one with their hand up. Okay, thank you so much. Well, then, let's go on to our consent agenda. I believe we want to pull item number two.
Pull in number four also, just.
Yes. Item number two wants to be here, and item number four, is that going to be for another time, correct?
Either another, yeah, another time would be fine, yep.
Okay. All right, so we'll do number four next week, then.
So I'll move consent agenda minus item two and four.
Second.
Further discussion, Commissioner DeBong?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Okay, and the chair votes yes. So let's go to item number two. I believe we have people in the room.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Kristi Boland, Dueshute County Property Management. So we're here today for your consideration of board signature of a memorandum of understanding for the Central Oregon Ready Response Resilient Project, known as Core Three. Just a little refresher, back in early December, a group from the Core Three Project Management Team came to your board, and the board discussed the potential of reserving 300 acres in the county's East Redmond track of 1,800 acres. And at that time, the board was supportive of that. Also, the board asked that we do an appraisal on the 300 acres, and we completed that process through a third-party appraiser, and that land appraised out at $16.3 million. That language about the value of the land has been added to the memorandum of understanding. So seeing that this is a huge milestone for this project, Scott Acock with Central Oregon Intergovernmental.
Council.
Council is here, and we also have a few.
Intergovernmental was the part of, a hard part about that, and you got it.
Drew a blank. So Scott is here, and we also have a few other stakeholders with the project. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Scott.
Thanks, Kristi. Good morning, Commissioners, Chair DeBong. Just wanted to essentially honor the decision that we're hoping you'll be making today on behalf of all the public safety agencies in Central Oregon that have been involved with this, our police and fire, emergency management, a host of state agencies, the governor's office, all the folks that are around the table for this project. We want to really thank you for the, for your prospective action, I suppose, to make this land available for the Core Three facility. And by doing so, you're going to make this, you're going to secure the opportunity for Central Oregon to develop this facility on behalf of all Central Oregonians, as well as Oregonians across the state, for which this facility would be critical rescue and recovery, infrastructure in the event of, you know, a major disaster, but also prepare all of our public safety personnel better in advance of those kinds of events. And so I have actually a little piece of news as well at the end, but we have Chief Kemna here, who is going to make a comment as well, and I think we have one or two folks on the Zoom.
Good morning, Commissioners, Chair DeBong. Thank you very much. Ken Kemna, Fire Chief, Redmond Fire and Rescue. Thank you very much for your time this morning. I simply want to express on behalf of the Central Oregon Fire Chiefs and myself as Fire Chief for Redmond Fire and Rescue, my gratitude, really for your continued support of this really important project. I know that it's, it seems like we have so far to go to make this a reality, but this is such an important step. Having had the opportunity to participate in the development of these kinds of things before, it's really easy to get bogged down in what seems like just a monumental task to accomplish, but your leadership on this, I think, is absolutely critical and key and demonstrates a commitment to something that is arguably in the best interest not only of Dueshute County, but all Central Oregonians. You've heard me wax poetic about the value of a facility like this, not just from a training and preparedness perspective, but really from a resilience perspective. This is, this really is going to be a key facility to support future generations, not only training, but recovery and resiliency specifically, and really be an asset to all of Central Oregon. So I really just want to express my sincere gratitude to you for your leadership up to this point and continued leadership. Commissioner DeBong, you've been, you know, in almost every meeting that I have been, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate the opportunity to work with you. Some of you may know I am stepping down from my position at the end of this month. I'll no longer be the Fire Chief of Redmond Fire and Rescue, but to demonstrate how important this project is to me, I am staying connected to this particular project. So I'm not going anywhere, so you will continue to see my shining face, although I'll be dressed a little bit differently.
And then without a mask soon.
Without a mask soon, yes, indeed. So thank you.
Oh, my gosh. You're retiring?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you get permission?
Was this a big announcement right now?
From the head office, I got the, I got permission, yes.
Oh, boy.
Okay. Okay, well, well, I'm glad to know that you're going to stay with the project because truly it needs that continuity and, you know, the cascade, what is it, 320 years, you know, like, every day is a new challenge. So I'm just glad that we're going to be stepping ahead. Scott, is there someone else? And congratulations on your semi-retirement.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, we're really lucky to have Chief Kemna stick around, and he'll still be, he'll be most likely one of the leaders on this effort going forward. Yes, we have Paula Simone on the Zoom, who's going to make a comment or two.
Okay, Paula.
No?
No, she's not going to?
Thanks for joining us, then.
I will. I just also want to just share the same sentiments as Chief Kemna and thank the board and Commissioner DeBong for everything that everybody has done, putting support behind this. It's real exciting to see where we're at today and all entities working together. The college itself, we've been involved in all the process, the talks from the beginning, so I just want to express my gratitude as well, and thank you for where we are today, and this is a big moment for us, so thank you.
Paula, could you explain the agency you're with and what it looks like real quick from your point of view?
Oh, I am sorry. Yeah, I'm with Central Oregon Community College. I am the Chair of the Public Service Education Department, and within our department is fire science, which represents structure, and well, then, fire EMS, which is EMT and paramedicine. We have criminal justice, and within criminal justice, we do corrections, pre-law, and law enforcement. And we also have military science, which is part of our education. It's the ROTC in partnership with OSU program here on campus. I've been involved in these talks from the beginning when we were just a smaller department, and President Chesley has so graciously basically given me, you go, Paula, you do what we need to do, bring all the information back to us, and I'm kind of that liaison conduit between college administration and operations and steering committee of the project. Hope that was.
That shows a lot of support for, yeah, future careers in public safety, and this would be the entry point at a community college. So thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Paula. Great comments, too, the, and thank you, Kristi, for pulling together the appraisal. Just to know that the county is contributing land that is worth appraised at $16.3 million, I really thought that was important. When you saw the overall cost, it was like $99 million originally, and to know that the county really has stepped up in a very financial way to help with this. So it will look good on the balance sheet, I'm sure.
Sure does.
Scott, did you have any additional comments on?
We might have Sonia McCormick with Oregon Emergency Management on the Zoom, but I don't know. I know she was.
She was connected while I was trying to elevate her. I don't have her in the Zoom.
Oh, darn. Okay.
Okay.
Well, that's, the only other thing I wanted to just let you guys know about, this is brand new, on Monday, the Joint Ways and Means Committee approved a capital bill that included $9.5 million for this project. And so this is huge news, and that's all for capital. That's all for, you know, helping build the $25 million in capital that it costs. So obviously, we have a lot, a lot of work to do, but thanks to Representative Zika, this was successful. Now, it still has to pass both chambers on the floor and get the governor's signature, but I would say it's extraordinarily likely that that will happen. And so it's kind of, it's a big, it's a big week for this project, and having the land available and then this initial very significant catalytic capital investment, I think we've got incredible momentum. So just wanted to let you know that. It's really good news. It's very exciting. I was pretty stunned when I heard about it and wanted to share it with you as well.
Right. No, it is, it's great news. So let's hope that both houses sign it, and the governor, no, the governor signs it, both houses pass it, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
We're tracking Bill 5202 very, there's a whole lot of really good things in there, so.
There are.
It does look very promising.
There's a lot of great stuff for Central Oregon in there and for the county, so.
Yes, truly, there is. So that's good. Well, thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll move. Board Signature Document Number 2022-217, a memorandum of understanding for the Core Three Project.
Second.
Any other discussion?
So just one other acknowledgement. So Scott, thank you very much. You know, we know Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council is our council of governments, and, you know, you're kind of herding the cats in this process, but my point is, the core partners and associate partners, there's a list, Exhibit C, those are all governing bodies, elected officials, agencies, people that have all shown support for this project, inclusive of all these operations in Jefferson, Crook, and Dueshute County. So as I say, it's a, it's a team effort here at this point, and thank you for helping coordinate this.
Thank you. No way we'd be doing this without that team, and if you don't mind, I'll also just, I'd like to acknowledge Shelby Knight and Sienna Fitzpatrick on our staff team. They have done a lot more work than I have on this, especially the last year, and without them, we wouldn't be where we're at. So thank you for letting me do that.
No, thank you for acknowledging. It's always important to let the world know who's, who's been working, and it is appreciated. Commissioner DeBong?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So thank you for coming with it, being here this morning.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we have item number 11. Let's see, Betsy Tucker?
So item four, we're actually pulling.
Right.
We're not, we're not pulling it to discuss.
No, not today. We'll bring it back next week.
So, yeah, and my thought, it's just a kind of a understanding, FTE, the big picture, the, you know, the future of that. So, yeah, well, it'll come back pretty quick.
Eric?
Good morning. I'm Betsy Tucker, Senior Budget Analyst, and this morning I am bringing a supplemental budget to you to consider. This is for the risk fund, and it is to. This is for the risk fund, and it is to account for legal settlements coming in higher than anticipated when we developed the budget last year. So the request is to transfer $2.4 million from the fund's contingency appropriation and increase the materials and services appropriation by $2.4 million to account for these expenses. Now, the one thing that's a little bit different about this request is that we need to hold a public hearing because the amount exceeds 10% of the adopted budget, and so that is why we need to do that. And so I am here, if you have any questions, Eric came along, just in case I wasn't able to, to answer.
And does the board need to open up the public hearing?
They do.
Okay, we are now opening up a public hearing on the adjustment, which, because it is more than 10%, you were saying.
So, yeah, just a question for Eric, I'm sure you can put it in perspective, so this is contingency in the existing fund, so it's not coming from other places, it's kind of built into this fund that we might have to do this, but then can you put the big picture around why a little bit?
Yes, that's correct, Commissioner DeBonne, it is contingency within the risk fund. The budget for, for risk management, management gets put together about six months or, or so before the actual fiscal year, and for the current fiscal year, for general liability, there was $1.2 million that was budgeted. There were, were two large costs, the board is aware of both of these, they were both reported in the media. One is a jury settlement, and the amount of total cost, total cost of the claim was 2.2 million, and then there was a settlement of 500,000. So year-to-date, the general liability line item is, is at 2.6 million, whereas 1.2 million has been budgeted. If you project that out for the rest of the fiscal year, the projection is, is the total cost for general liability will be 3.2 million. The funds in contingency are there for this very reason, but it's just a matter of when the, when the budget is put together, these two large, large, large costs were not factored into the materials and services, they were factored into the contingency, and so by this action, we will move the contingency dollars up to materials and services to cover those costs.
So even as an organization, if we know that, oh, this is going to, you know, it'll start to get expensive, sometimes you don't know which fiscal year to land something on, even if you can see it coming.
That's correct, with, if a, when a claim is opened through risk management, we estimate the, the cost of that claim, and then we start to budget for that, sometimes claims, and this could be a general liability claim or a workers' comp claim, sometimes that claim will cost the county, in the case of workers' comp, it might be a five-year claim that, over the course of those five years, it's $200,000 for, you know, a knee replacement, and on the general liability side, we open the claim, we estimate the cost, we adjust that as the claim progresses, we work with legal, if there's a tort claim or a lawsuit is filed, and then there might be an open claim, and then two years later, there might be a settlement or a jury award, or the county may prevail. So that's kind of the life of a claim. So budgeting over different fiscal years is, is a bit of a challenge with an insurance fund, but that's what it's there for. We pool together all of the county's insurance programs, and so that provides them stability, and really, the goal in risk management is, if there's any claim, that it doesn't impact operations. So we operate almost like a commercial insurance company.
Thank you.
Eric, when, when we were processing these, these two large settlements, there were substantial concerns expressed by taxpayers about, you know, who would pay for these, who would pay for these costs and how, and I'm definitely tracking you that you, we'll, we'll pay the current bill, you know, out of contingency for the risk fund, but can you describe a little bit about how the sheriff's office will be paying more into the risk fund in coming years to sort of smooth out that this large expenditure right now?
Sure, sure. I mean, in, in general, the question of who pays for the claim, it's, it's the county, and the way the risk fund works is, is, it's funded by charges to departments, and each year, we have an actuarial study done, and there's a cost allocation model, and the charges to departments are based on the last four years of claims, the size of the budget, the FTE, because those are both indicators of a department's risk, and then the relative risk of the department. So those, those factors go into the charge. It's, it's similar to somebody's personal situation where if anybody has teen drivers, that's, those aren't fun years, and if your teen driver gets in an accident and you turn it into insurance, your premiums will likely go up. And so there's, you know, the, the higher number of claims and the higher dollar amount of claims for a department will result in increased charges into the, increased charges from risk management.
So for the, for the taxpayers who are concerned about this, the pathway that their tax dollars will be covering these, these settlement costs is through the, the sheriff's office, tax, tax District One and tax District Two?
In general, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the risk fund is pooled together, so all county, all county departments and offices sharing that risk, but the predominant funds will, I mean, not directly, but indirectly will come from, from the sheriff's office, the law enforcement districts wanted to, as you mentioned.
Thank you.
And I, I just wanted to point out that with decreasing the contingency account by 2.4 million leaves a balance of 1,045,296. So there's still our funds left in the contingency.
Yeah, there's actually more money left, there's, there's another line item in contingency for the workers' comp reserve, so there's actually more money, if you look at, if you look at the total fund balance for the risk fund, you know, projected at the end of the year, there's, there's still projected to be a total of $7 million in the risk reserve. It, it doesn't show on, on that report.
No, it doesn't show on this report.
Yeah, there's, if, if the board would like, we could actually look at the risk finance report that, that came to the board on Monday, and, and it's, it shows a bigger picture of the whole fund. So I could either go over that with the board right now or separately after this meeting.
I guess my question about that would be, are, in the contingency within the risk fund, do we have basically separate compartments for workers' comp and legal settlements?
In general, no, the risk fund is just one fund, because when you, when you pool together any insurance program, the, the bigger the pool that you cover, and the more insurance programs you put together, the more stability you have. So it's just one fund, it's just Fund 670, that is general liability, workers' comp, property, unemployment, and vehicle insurance. However, the state requires employers to have a separate reserve for workers' comp claims, or to purchase, to purchase a, a bond to cover that, so that if the employer goes out of business, the state won't be held with those outstanding workers' comp claims. Of course, Deschutes County is not going to go out of business, but there's still that state law, so we have a separate line item that we call a workers' comp reserve to satisfy that state requirement.
So those funds are, they, they are restricted or semi-restricted?
Probably semi-restricted.
Okay. Helpful to understand. And that, that accounts for the bulk of that 7 million, you know, contingency balance still available?
It's about 2.5 or 2.2 of that 7 million.
Okay.
And really, the, the key element of the risk fund is, each year, we have an actuarial firm, they, they do a, a study for us, we share with them our open claims, our projected costs, and they give us an analysis of how much money we need in the risk fund moving forward. So the, the risk fund remains, remains healthy, and part of that is, is when we have claims, as soon as they're opened, we, we plan for them.
There's also reinsurance level, as in maximum exposure would be calculated, but I think it's generally been $1 million?
Yes, yes, that's correct. For general liability, we are self-insured up to $1 million, and then we purchase an excess general liability policy that covers claims over $1 million and up to $10 million. So the one large claim, the total cost of the county was 2.4 million. So we actually just recently received 1.2 million back from insurance or reinsurance. So the 2.2 million, we're self-insured up to that first million, you subtract 2.2 million, or you subtract 1 million from 2.2 million, and we, we received 1.2 million for claims reimbursement, and that's what you'll see on the finance risk report under revenue or resources, there's a line item for claims reimbursement, and you'll see that 1.2 million in your next month's report.
So it came in in February?
It came in last week.
Okay, February.
Yeah.
All right.
So, well, one more question about this, so I appreciate you explaining the, the way that different departments would be billed for the risk management account in future years, kind of using that premium, insurance premium analogy, does that, so the, this reallocation does use a substantial amount of the contingency funds that are available, that, that sort of new premium, does that essentially, i- is that essentially an attempt to absorb the expenditures that have been made to date, or is that forecasting forward the potential risk associated with different departments? You know, I, my, what I'm getting at here is, I am concerned about the, the risk fund and the contingency within it being able to absorb future large settlement amounts if, you know, if that is a, a potential risk.
Yeah, really, it covers both.
Okay.
And what, what the risk fund accounts for is, is if a, if a county employee is in a vehicle accident, and when we're at fault and the other party is injured, and it's a, it's a substantial injury, if that happens today, we're going to open up a claim and estimate the cost of that. Then, once a year, when we do that actuarial study, that will get factored into how much money we need to have in the risk fund. So we, we account for claims so that we have money in the bank in future years to pay them out. The other thing we account for, and I still don't understand quite how mathematically they do this, but it's the incurred but not reported, or in the risk field, it's called IBNR. So these are claims that have happened, but we don't know about them yet. So if you think of just somebody walking on a county property, say there was a large hole, they trip and fall, they're injured, so it's been incurred, but they haven't notified us yet. And so mathematically, our actuarial firm looks back historically at the number of claims and comes up with a number to even account for those type of claims. And so the idea is, is as we have, as claims are incurred, you know, we, we reserve money aside, we adjust it through the life of the claim, so that we have funds, you know, that the risk fund remains healthy to pay those out. And by pooling together all the workers' comp and general liability claims, you end up with more stability in the fund. The largest costs tends to be workers' comp, a general liability, the second one, and I, when you, if you go back and look at a 10-year cost of those two programs, luckily, they kind of go like this. Workers' comp claims, the low is about 500,000, the highest is about 1.2 million, but for, for some reason, when workers' comp is up, general liability costs are down that year, and then some years, it'll trend the other way, but that provides stability for the fund. And also so that department charges and costs don't spike and, and valley. Yes, departments will see increased costs based on claims, and decrease, decreased costs when they have lower claims, but that provides stability so that you don't see why, you know, huge swings year to year, and that helps with departments budgeting.
Eric, you might remind the public how long you've been doing this job? No, because I, you know, the history of, you know, where you're saying, what, it's been, what, 10 years or something, that you, you've been seeing how it somehow balances out?
Yeah, I've been the county's risk manager for 14 years.
14 years?
14 years.
Okay, and so that's been pretty consistent then, those whole entire 14 years?
Yes, yes, in fact, I think my first week on the job, I remember my boss at the time, he handed me a tort claim notice that had come into the county and said, here, you know, stop by and I'll tell you what this is. And we, of course, worked closely with, with legal on tort claims and lawsuits, but I was pretty new to the risk management field when I started at the county, but had, had good support.
Great, yeah.
And so just in case we have a year where the, the workers' comp claims and the general liability claims stack up, we, we feel confident that we have the contingency to, to be able to absorb that?
That's correct. And on the workers' comp side, we are also self-insured, but we purchase an excess workers' comp policy that covers the, basically claims over 500,000. So there's, there's a protection there, I mean, there's a cost to purchase those policies, but it provides the county some, some level of, of protection. If you look at property insurance, we purchase a policy just like a homeowner would to cover county property, and that policy, we're only self-insured up to $10,000, because the value of, of all the county's buildings and properties is roughly 100 million, and there's no way we can self-insure 100 million dollars worth of assets. So for, for property insurance, that would be too much of a risk to the county, so we purchase a policy just like most homeowners do.
Is there a limit to that policy?
Uh, there's like a per occurrence amount, but it's, it's, we review it every year, and it's, it sufficiently covers the county.
I mean, I was just wondering, let's say, like, this building, what if something happened and we lost this building, would it, would it pay for the building then, over the, over the 10,000?
Yes, yes, any, any claim over 10,000, we, we can turn into insurance.
Okay.
Are we done with questions and discussion?
I think so. Do we have a motion?
I move approval of resolution number?
Pardon me, you may want to close the?
Oh, we have to close the public hearing.
See if there is anybody that wants to speak.
Is there anybody on Zoom that wants to offer any comments? No, and there's no one in the room that does, okay. Thank you so much. So we will close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion?
I move approval of resolution 2022-013, transferring appropriations within the 2021 to 22 Deschutes County budget.
And I will second it.
And the only thing I would like, Eric, is the Fund 670, if you could send us that to attach to this document, just for our reference. I know we had it on Monday, but I just would like it to be put together. So Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the Chair of both chairs.
And I'll just acknowledge, yeah, we had a public hearing and a college course along the way of, of risk management.
There you go, Risk Management 101.
Yep.
And thank you, Betsy, for the assistance on the budget.
Yes, thank you.
And thank you for keeping, thank you for keeping on top of this stuff, Eric. A lot of people don't find insurance exciting, but when the stuff hits the fan, it's really good to have it.
Oh, oh, thank you.
There you go, he was ready.
Very good, that was fast.
Well, it puts that 7.6 number in perspective, too, how we just sliced and diced it so many ways.
Yes, okay, I mean, I remember it, I just, just wanted to see it again, feel better. Okay, the next item is a proclamation declaring March as Red Cross Month. Let's see, would we, the Commissioners, like to read this?
Yes.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Chang, do you want to take the first two paragraphs, Commissioner DeBonne, this, the big middle one?
Sure.
And I'll do the last one, I guess?
Okay.
Oh, I guess there's like two little ones at the end.
A proclamation declaring March 20-
A proclamation declaring March 2022 as American Red Cross Month, whereas, in times of crisis, people in Deschutes County come together to care for one another. This humanitarian spirit is part of the foundation of our community and is exemplified by American Red Cross Cascades region volunteers and donors. Whereas in 1881, Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. Today, more than 140 years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers here in Deschutes County who continue to carry out Clara's lifesaving legacy. They join the millions of people across the United States who volunteer, give blood, donate financially, or learn vital life preserving skills through the Red Cross.
Whereas in the Cascades region, serving Oregon and southwest Washington, the contributions of more than 2,500 local Red Cross volunteers give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours. Red Cross does so by providing more than 1,600 emergency overnight shelter stays, along with food and comfort for families devastated by more than 680 local disasters like home Through the generosity of those donating, more than 182,000 units of essential blood for accident and burn victims, heart surgery and organ transplant patients, and those receiving treatment for leukemia, cancer, or sickle cell disease. Or by supporting service members and veterans on an average of eight times a day, along with their families and caregivers, through the unique challenges of military life. And by helping to save the lives of others with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering international humanitarian aid.
Whereas, their work to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to strengthening our community's resilience. We dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advance the noble legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, who lived by her words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it." We ask others to join in this commitment to give back to our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved, Deschutes County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim March 2022 as Red Cross Month and encourage all citizens of Deschutes County to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. And I guess we probably need a motion then for this proclamation's dated, so we can sign it?
I'll move approval of the proclamation declaring March as Red Cross Month in Deschutes County.
Second.
Any other discussion? Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So thank you, and do remember, I do believe the blood levels are really low, so if you can donate blood, that would be appreciated. We're now to item number 13.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Tarek Rawlings, I'm an associate planner with the Deschutes County Community Development Department. And I think you should each have a copy of the decision matrix here. We're reserving today's agenda item for deliberations related to a plan amendment zone change under file number 247-21-000400-PA and 401-ZC for a property that's owned and operated by the Central Oregon Irrigation District. This follows a public hearing that took place on January 22 of 2022 and then was followed by a 21-day open record period, which concluded on February 16 at 4:00 p.m. Within the open record period, we received several, four, public comments, no rebuttal items, and then a final legal argument from the applicant. And the decision matrix reflects the five general issue areas that were raised by the oppositional comments during the public hearing and open record process, which is outlined on your matrix here today. And so as part of the deliberative process here, we're going to use this informational tool, sort of in past uses, similar to other public hearings we might have gone through, that will highlight, kind of, I'll go through usually just in order, one through five, highlight the issue area, potentially the hearings officer's findings and recommendation related to that issue area, and then ultimately pose the issue to the, to the commission in terms of whether they'd, how they'd like to handle that or deliberate to a certain finding on each issue area. So with that, I could start with any, any questions you might have, or I'd be happy to just go right into the issue areas.
Tarek, I wanted to comment. At first, I thought I was looking at marijuana again, but, no, truly, because we had so many, I think the way you've set it up has been excellent, and I appreciate the size of the font in the paper, because reading the other one, but no, this is, this is outstanding work, and I thank you for doing, you know, presenting the position at this moment in time.
I brought glasses for the small version, too, so thanks for the bigger one.
Yeah, no, this is really great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I do see Adam Smith's online now. I don't know if he had any preliminary comments for the board at this time.
Adam, do you have, would you like to say anything? There he is.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Smith, Assistant Legal Counsel. No comments from me, but of course, I'm here to answer any questions or to assist Tarek as he leads you through the deliberation matrix.
Thank you, Adam. Appreciate you being there. I think without further ado, we could start with issue area number one, if that sounds good to the commission?
Yes.
All right, so the first issue area on the matrix here deals with whether the application will result in a lack of recreational use or open space uses related to, on the subject property, but as experienced by neighboring property owners. The hearings officer found that it's, the property itself is not zoned for open space use, it's not a publicly owned property, and found that that was not necessarily any kind of applicable issue area for a founding of denial on that particular issue area. So with that, staff does agree with the recommendation from the hearings officer related to this open space and recreational use issue area, but that would be the question to the commission at this time, is whether, whether you all agreed with that.
It is north of Hanlon Park, or Hanson Park, excuse me, and that is 5.8 acres. So it does border that park, the city park.
Correct.
Well, and, you know, the comments in the hearings officer referring to, it has been reviewed for historic areas or inventory, natural resources, or scenic. So, you know, it's good that that is in the record also, just acknowledging all that.
And so if I might, just for clarification, so if the commissioners wouldn't mind just expressing whether they agree with that hearings officer's finding, or whether they, essentially whether they're confirming the hearings officer's recommendation?
Yeah, so we've, yeah, we've done matrix like this before, and these are kind of the decision points. So I support the hearings officer decision and agree with the staff on this decision point.
I do as well.
And I agree as well, but I truly want to acknowledge that a lot of residents in that community took the time to let us know how worried they are about what's going on, the development, how they try and get out on the road, the cat and mouse game, making a left turn, slowing down, you know, it's truly, I can feel what their comments are and, you know, I hope that something better is going to, you know, give them a little more safety in their neighborhood. So, it's, but I do agree, I have to agree with the hearings officer.
Very good. Thank you for the clarification. And that, that might transition well into our next issue area, which has to deal with traffic impact.
Oh, yes.
So exactly as Chair Adair had pointed out, there were numerous comments related to potential existing traffic conditions, but then potential further impacts from this proposal that might be, that might exacerbate these traffic impacts. The record includes a traffic study from the applicant, which was reviewed and confirmed by the hearings officer, showing that there wouldn't be significant traffic impacts or anything that would exceed the capacity of the existing transportation system in that area. And that would be the, that's, that's overall, the, kind of similar to the first issue area, that's the main recommendation of the hearings officer that staff also agrees with. So looking for clarification from the board as to your thoughts on that particular issue area.
I guess I would say that if this, if the proposal is to move this land to MUA 10, and we're talking about a pretty small number of, of units that would be allowed in MUA 10, so I would, you know, with that perspective, I would agree with the hearings officer's finding. I do think that there is a good possibility that after this land is rezoned, it will be, you know, it would be eligible for inclusion in the next urban growth boundary expansion. And that at, at that point in time, we would be talking about a substantially higher level of development. We would also be talking about a substantially higher level of commitment from the city of Bend to engineer the, the transportation system to be able to accommodate that growth. So I, we're getting into, you know, from that perspective, we're getting into a lot of what ifs, you know, maybe very probable or possible what ifs, but, you know, it gets pretty speculative. So I, I just, you know, I want to clarify, if I support the hearings officer's decision that, you know, rezoning this to MUA 10 is not going to result in substantial traffic impacts, that, that doesn't mean that I, I don't think that, you know, there are potential future scenarios where the traffic situation really changes dramatically in this area. But that, that again, would be the city's responsibility to engineer the transportation system appropriately to, to deal with. So, agree. Support the hearings officer's finding.
Thank you, Commissioner Chang.
And I agree.
And I do also.
Very good. Thank you very much, Commissioners. And to the third issue area, this deals with potential wildlife impacts and whether the proposal may, may result in impacts to wildlife habitats or wildlife populations. This is based, excuse me, this is based essentially on public comments detailing wildlife sightings that the neighboring property owners have experienced on the subject property. The hearings officer and staff both agree that this property is not within a wildlife area combining zone. There's not been other wildlife sort of inventories or other zones associated with that property. And so that is the recommendation of both staff and the hearings officer. And again, looking for clarification on this third issue area related to wildlife.
Tarek, would it be out of the scope of this process to ask about the recently completed wildlife inventory update maps that we hope to, you know, we, I hope we will include in the comprehensive plan update? You know, I guess what I'd like to know is, so it, the subject property is not located within a current wildlife area combining zone, but is, you know, do we know whether the, the map updates would indicate that this area would be considered, you know, mule deer winner range in the future?
Sure. I think it's out, largely outside of the, the scope just today, within the plan amendment zone change, but Peter Gatauski could speak to the larger wildlife inventory efforts?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Commission, Peter Gatauski, Community Development Director. I mean, while the question, I certainly can answer the question, it's not part of the record, and it's not, couldn't be used for the basis for a, a decision, but the, the updated inventories do not, certainly the mule deer do not identify lands east of Bend. So as that process goes forward, and we haven't even begun to initiate that formally, that could occur, should occur late spring. But yeah, that inventory that's on our work plan, per the board's direction, does not impact this property.
Good to know, thank you.
I support the hearings officer decision in the, in this matter.
And I do also.
Me too.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. And two more issue areas here. The fourth issue area deals with whether the proposal would result in the lack or the preclusion of hobby farming activities on the subject property. Both staff and the hearings officer would note that the MUA 10 zone, which is proposed for, which would be the new zone for the subject property, does allow as an outright use hobby farming and farm activities. And so that, it would not preclude hobby farming, so to speak, from being practiced on that subject property, although there have been public comments, oppositional comments expressing concern that they would be precluded.
So I've always figured that, yeah, that MUA 10 zone hobby farming is kind of the lifestyle that people would love to see in this area. You know, obviously, you need soil conditions and some water and, you know, the opportunity to do that. So, I mean, the opportunity is probably enhanced by being in an MUA 10 zone instead of EFU for the, for that vision. And I support the hearings officer decision.
I also support it.
I also support it.
Very good. Thank you very much, Commissioners. And that would lead us to our fifth and final issue area, which deals largely with just kind of generally growth management in the area, and whether the proposal would bring in development that might impact the quality of life for neighboring residents, neighboring the subject property. There's no, no real specific criteria that were, that these comments were directed to, but I think even, you might recall in the public hearing, a lot of the comments were focused on whether this was the best spot for this type of growth, whether there were other properties that might be better fits. A lot, a lot of that is not necessarily applicable to the review, since this is just a singular subject property and the applicant is the owner of that property, and this is what they've applied for. This really, I think, kind of to Commissioner Chang's point, is looking further down the line potentially to, to a potential inclusion within the city. Because it's adjacent to the city of Bend's urban growth boundary, we did send a notice of comment, or a notice of application to the city of Bend's long, or Growth Management Department, and did not receive any comments from them or any concerns related to this proposal. And so with that, that's, staff and the hearings officer both agree that there's not really any grounds for denial based on just the sort of broad assessment of growth management that's been put forward in the public comments. And so with that, I look to the board for clarity on this issue area.
I would just reemphasize this, this last sentence in, you know, in the hearings officer column. The hearings officer states that they do not have the authority to deny the requested applications on the basis of concerns about growth as the proposal otherwise complies with applicable criteria. Change is coming to this area, and I can certainly see how people have concerns about their, their quality of life changing, but I do not believe we have the authority to deny the requested application on the basis of those concerns.
I think this is kind of that, that trigger that the neighborhood is, you know, it kind of encapsulates the energy from the neighbors saying, hey, wait a minute, I don't want, you know, that over there, but we ought to manage growth. People are still moving here. This is a future, future step, as I say, when you start to think about when it's densely developed is after it's in EGB, and a process before that's probably in urban reserve. And a process before that is the, the whole survey of what's at the edge of the city. So it's good, my point is, it's good for the residents of the area to just get, understand that big picture and the runway in front of it. So, but yeah, the hearings officer words are reasoned, and I do support those.
I, I still feel, I feel badly for the community, and, you know, they've had this private property, which they've enjoyed in their, you know, right out their back door. And it does, I'm sure it does hurt, and to know that, you know, building is happening that way, you know, I have to agree with the hearings officer, but I, I read the letters, you know, they're at the end of the cul-de-sac, their kids are playing out in the road. I mean, all those comments, they weren't, you know, we, you know, we read them, and I, I feel what they're, I feel that they're paying, you know, growth is really hard. It's just like, this last weekend, Sisters was written up in the Wall Street Journal, of all places, about there was no traffic in Sisters, and it was a lovely place to be.
What?
Yes, I know, and I'm like, yes, it was, it is, but, oh my gosh, how many more, millions of people are going to come to Deschutes County because of that little write-up in the Sisters, or in the Wall Street Journal? And it said, "Five mountain towns that you must visit that don't have traffic." So I emailed the writer, and I said, gosh...
All weekend and all summer.
I said, "You haven't been here at the rodeo or at the Quill Festival." And she goes, "Oh, no, I was there in April," and she loved it. And she goes, oh, no, I was there in April and she loved it. So, you know, the world knows about us and, you know, there's always that price when they come and they visit and they go, oh, it's so beautiful, and then they want to move here. So we're in that point in our lives. So, yes, I agree.
And then I believe you'd already said you had agreed, Commissioner Chang, but okay, just clarifying. Very good. So thank you for clarification on those five issue areas at this point. I think next steps are, if you feel that more deliberations are necessary, we could, of course, schedule that for a future date. If not, we can conclude the deliberations and then vote on whether to uphold or overturn. It sounds like we're voting to affirm or uphold the hearings officer's decision, or that would be what the clarification on the issue areas would indicate. But I think that, yeah, that question would be before you is whether, A, deliberations, further deliberations are needed, and then if not, then whether a vote could be rendered at this time.
Adam, is there anything else you wanted to point out at this moment?
No, consistent with Tarek's recommendation, county legal would recommend in a case like this that you go ahead and, if, of course, if you're finished with deliberations, that you proceed with just a motion concluding those deliberations. And then we will, of course, finalize the ordinance package and bring that to you at a later date. With other types of projects, sometimes we wait for the written decision for the board's vote, but in this case, the findings are likely going to be the hearing officer's decision in their entirety. And so I don't think there's anything that would preclude you from providing the applicant and the neighbors some certainty by voting, by having a motion to accept the hearing officer's recommendation and approve the plan amendment zone change this morning.
Commissioner Chang, did you want to continue with any more deliberations?
I have a couple more thoughts, but is this, is this the time to do that?
I think so, I believe so, yes.
Well, I guess I would just, I would just like to say that we all know that Deschutes County is one of the fastest growing counties in the nation and we have a desperate need for housing. In my opinion, areas like these on the edge of our current urban growth boundaries are the appropriate places for that growth to happen. I know that, yeah, I know that for the people who are living near this property, that that change is not necessarily welcome. And I, you know, I can, I can relate to that, you know, I, the home that I currently live in, I had been in that home for maybe three years when the, you know, the double lot next door to me with a little bitty house on it had that house leveled and had, you know, four enormous units built on it that block out the sun from my single level home. So I definitely appreciate that people have concerns about growth and its impacts on our quality of life. But this is, you know, you know, most of us are, most of us have not lived here more than 20 years and we are, we are part of the pressure that, you know, we are part of the pressure that is causing all of this new development to happen. So, you know, I just want to say to the, to the adjacent property owners that I, you know, I feel sympathy for their concerns and I hope that there are other open spaces, you know, not too far from where they live that they can use and safe places for their kids to play. But this is, in my opinion, one of the most appropriate places for future growth to occur. So I'm, you know, on the higher level, besides the legal technical questions about this application, I'm supportive of this proposal.
Commissioner DeBon.
So, yeah, just a comment about the process here, you know, I mean, this is the respectful land use process. Hearings officer did a good job. You know, I thank the community for getting engaged and understanding what the, you know, what the process is, what the terms are. So the terminology we're using here sometimes that people have to ask about it, but it's also, you know, it is that opportunity to learn about land use and growth management in this community. So, yeah, I'm ready for a motion if.
Okay, would you like to make one then?
Move support of the hearings officer's decision.
Technically, you'd be accepting the recommendation of the hearings officer and approving the PA and ZC, the plan amendment zone change.
Can I just move as he's clarified?
Yeah, if you want to.
Plan amendment and zone change and hearings officer's decision.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair of the House.
It'll read eloquently in the minutes, I'm sure.
Thank you very much, Commissioners, and I'll work with legal counsel to come back at a future date, just like Adam had indicated with the updated ordinance exhibits and with a first reading essentially.
Okay, so then that'll be the document number and the final package. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioners. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Tarek.
Thank you, Tarek.
You recall, Commissioners, we've been trying to kind of create this process where when you deliberate, you're done, you've gone through the matrix.
Show support.
Address the kind of larger issue in front of you. And that's why I think Adam suggested, as he did, that you make a motion today, accepting the recommendation, approving the zone change in the, in the plan amendment. The documentation, the support that will come back and then you have a separate opportunity to accept that, or if you don't like the way it's structured or worded, you can push it back to staff and we can word smith to how you like. But ultimately, you're accepting the recommendation and approving.
And that's a reminder that we've been in a spot where we've had a matrix. We've had two to one votes on specific items and then you kind of look at the big picture of all of them and then you're like, well, yeah, I think we've just approved it. And, you know, in my mind, I knew what we did, but we've had the media call afterwards, well, is it approved or denied? And, you know, it wasn't clear. So that's, that's what we're talking about here. Even though the paperwork will follow, the clarity is it's been approved.
Right.
Because it's pretty funny when the media calls after, I don't know, what did you guys do? It's like, well, we worked hard through a matrix and.
Right.
And I just shared with our Community Development Director, Peter Gatauski, it is helpful for the board to have some draft motions, just so that you can refer right to that as you, you know, sometimes it's either approved or it's denied or it can be, you know, subject to changes. Just, it helps guide the board. You have a lot on your plate and to have a quick, easy reference.
Well, yeah, because I know for a fact, you get right down into the matrix and then you want to reference something, then you read another document and then you read the comments about it and you forget what the big picture is. Are we approving or denying?
Yeah.
Well, the matrix was really excellent.
Yeah.
So I appreciate that.
Look at that, right on schedule. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Is this the same one I already had? Is it? If you need extra, you can have it.
Morning, Commissioners. Greg Munn, County Finance. I'm joined by Scott Akok from Central Oregon Interagency or Intergovernmental Council. And on today's agenda, number 14, is an update on the American Rescue Plan Act funding. And last time we met, the conversation was about three weeks ago. So this is a continuing, sort of a long-term continuing meeting as we work through the ARPA Act and funding commitments. So two items on, two sub-items on today's agenda. One is to, for Scott and the COIC folks, to give an update on the status of the small business grant program. And then also, to the extent that the board would like to, is to continue a conversation about the list that's attached to your staff report here in terms of funding other projects. I handed out a letter from, a memo from COIC, and I sent that to you earlier this week and also you have a hard copy in front of you here. Scott will go over that in a second. Before we move ahead, I just want to give you a little bit of an update. So we've, Scott has probably talked to the board three or four times as we've, as they've been working through this lengthy process to identify where the economic impacts, the negative economic impacts of COVID have been on our local businesses and nonprofits. So today is the final installment of that conversation. The work has been done, the results have all been tallied, they spent a lot of time doing this work. And so he will be talking about that and also Q and A session and potentially a decision from the board on how you want to proceed in terms of funding these results. And then, once that decision is made, if you make that today, then we will proceed to come back at some future point soon by applying whatever that funding mechanism is to the eligible request for a formal approval of allocation of funds to the businesses that are eligible. So with that, I'll turn it over to Scott and his folks.
Thank you again. Good morning, Scott Akok, Community Economic Development Director for COIC. And just as a reminder for you all, as well as anybody else watching, that the purpose of the grant program is to help small businesses and nonprofits in Deschutes County recover essentially from the negative economic impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic and the shutdowns and all that stuff. So what we did in order to define who would be eligible is had them submit tax returns and for 2021, other kinds of financial records to demonstrate how they were doing in 2019, how, what happened in 2020 and what happened in 2021 for an overall estimated net impact of either cost increases that have occurred due to COVID or more, much more commonly, revenue losses that occurred. We got that total number for each applicant and then we subtracted from that any grants they had already received. So if they've got PPP or forgivable loans as well. So PPP, federal programs, prior state or local grant programs, et cetera. And, you know, we did our best. We did not have necessarily lists for everything. We had, of course, all the ones we've managed, we could check against, but some of the federal ones, the PPP, there's a list, for some of the others, there's not. So we did our best and we had them also attest that the information they provided on their application was accurate and, you know, noted that that was fraud, if not. So the, it opened on December 10th, closed on January 7th. Since then, we've been processing the 291 applications. You see on the memo, just like last time, there's a little kind of example of how we did the analysis determining if someone had still a net, a net remaining negative impact that was an eligible amount for award or not. And you can see an example where they were determined that they did and where they were, another applicant was not. So of the 291 submissions, after we did that analysis, and it's not just looking at the returns, there was follow-up questions for just about all 291 applications. So we got updated financials, et cetera. We determined that 93 were eligible for award, so about 32% of the applications were eligible. Of that 93, the total eligible amount is $8,276,000 and change, which is obviously considerably more than the two and a half million that has been set aside for this program. This is, again, businesses and nonprofits that were able to demonstrate these impacts. So we, most of these were smaller eligible amounts, but there were enough quite large ones that that's why we got up to that 8.2 million. And most of the, the average eligible amount was about $89,000. So what we, what we have is a couple of different ways we could go forward to shrink the total amount that you award to these 93 applicants or eligible applicants to the 2.5 million. And my understanding is that depending on the direction you set, that staff from both COIC and Deschutes County staff will kind of run those numbers and bring it back to you. So the one, I came up with kind of three, or we on our team came up with three ideas. One is simply picking, you know, dividing 93, it's not as simple as that, but basically dividing 93 into 2.5 million and then that comes up with 20 something thousand dollars, which would be a cap. And everyone would get it regardless of their eligible amount. Now, those, the reason it's not exactly that is because those that were eligible for less than whatever that cap is would only get that. So we'd have to kind of fund them totally and then, then divide the rest. That's one way of doing it. That obviously on, in a way favors the smaller businesses and the smaller losses over the larger businesses and the larger losses because some of those businesses with larger losses are eligible for 500,000 or whatever. So the cap would be significantly lower. I'm just, you know, noting the implications of these, these different directions.
You actually said the highest amount was 939,598.
Yeah.
And looking at this, if you divide 2.5 with the 8.2, it's like 30%.
Yeah.
So then looking at, okay, everyone gets 30%. That maximum, the 939,000 would be still 281,879.
Yes.
So.
Which is significant.
That's a significant amount of money, you know, and I'm going like, someone actually filled out a form and they're only going to get $456?
Yeah.
I mean, how much did they spend on filling out the form?
You know, and you could also, and so I was going to say, the second scenario option was just a flat percentage across all of them, whatever that percentage is to get to the 2.5 million, which is sort of a, treats everyone equally. You could decide that based on what you just said, Commissioner, that you would create a floor, like no less than a thousand dollars or something like that, if you wanted to bump folks up that were only eligible for a very small amount. I'm just, you know, that's entirely up to you.
Are we, are we going to be in a spot to be able to make this decision today or are we studying?
I think we're asking for direction.
Yeah, no, I'd like to. It's, I'm, you know.
I'm sure people would like to get funding.
Yeah, I'd like to conclude it if possible. So that was my question.
Okay, well, so that, so yeah, this, I mean, we, if you said, give us direction, then we can quickly generate a report that says, okay, here's how that, those awards will flow and we can start working on cutting checks. There is another step, but I'll.
Well, but yeah, let's just give direction if at all possible.
Okay, so, and that's, yeah, it's really in your hands. So that's up to you. We're not pushing or slowing it down. It's up to you. The other one that I was thinking of is you could do sort of an inverse proportional thing so that those at the very, at a very small eligible award amount get 100% of their request and then you, we kind of essentially build a curve that reduces that percentage as you get up to the highest amounts. So it's sort of, again, that's another way of essentially, you're making the smaller ones a little more whole and you're reducing the size of the really big ones that kind of throw the whole thing off. So those are the three scenarios that we came up with. And, you know, the question, I guess, is, you know, where your concerns lie or your hopes lie? Is it in not making too many very large ones to individual businesses? Is it, you know, supporting the smaller ones more or just treating everyone essentially the same and a similar percent, or the same percentage essentially for everyone?
I ask a question. So we know, we know who made small requests, who made large requests.
Yes.
Does that correspond to the size of the business? So is it bigger small businesses made bigger requests, smaller, small businesses made smaller requests or, you know, are the, are the two things independent of each other?
So to clarify again, they, they filled out paperwork or the application that yielded a number that they thought they were eligible for. So that was their request. So then we looked through it and determined what their actual eligible amount was based on the formula we set up. So it wasn't so much a request as just like, it spit it out, here's what you're eligible for. But in terms of, you know, the, the size of the business, yes, it does correlate to that in generally, general correlation, in terms of the total gross revenues of the business, not necessarily the number of employees or other ways you might, you know what I mean? So some, but that tends to be correlated to. Businesses with more gross revenues tend to have more employees, but if, if they're in certain markets, they may have a few employees but a lot of revenues. So it, general correlation, yes, but not, you know, one-to-one.
How many were over 500,000?
You know, I, I think Jared Puckett is actually on the Zoom and hasn't, if he could be put into the.
I mean, I was just wondering.
I don't know that offhand. Jared hasn't.
Was up to a million. He was up to a million almost, so...
Yeah. It's not many, but it's, Dan, I don't know if you recall off the top of your head.
What was the median?
Oh, here comes Jared.
What was the median, not the average? What was the median? That's maybe, that would be more helpful.
Jared, the first question was how many were 500,000 or more? And Jared's, I don't remember your title, Jared at COIC.
So Jared Puckett, I am a program assistant here at COIC. It's an easy question to answer. There are four businesses that were more than 500,000. There was a really big, so that like 939,000 was the biggest eligible amount, but then the second biggest eligible amount went down to 668,000. But yeah, only four businesses were above 500,000.
Jared, can you run a quick formula to determine the median rather than the average?
Right.
The median was 40,000.
So half are 40,000 and less, and half are...
Yes.
Oh, wow. That's a lower median than I would have thought.
That's interesting, isn't it?
The average?
Truly, sometimes you need the median and not the average.
Yeah.
If you've...
Yeah, the average amount was really swung up by those businesses that had really big eligible amounts.
Okay.
So it's...
Scott, you mentioned kind of the curve, you know?
Yeah.
That sounds like a great option right now, you know, trying to run the numbers on that, you know, where you're really skewing it towards bringing that top number down, but kind of fully funding everybody from the bottom up.
Yeah, it'd be like 100% down to, I don't know what the final number would be.
Exactly, it'll find itself.
Whatever. It would be, kind of do an even curve, essentially.
Or if you have to do it by breaking into brackets, I mean...
We talked about that too, yeah, quartiles or quintiles or whatever, and then this...
Constructing a perfectly smooth curve is going to be complicated.
You're right.
I'm sure somebody who knows calculus or something could do that, but...
Thank you for offering that.
But brackets, brackets might be, you know, a useful way of accomplishing that.
Yeah.
Well, I think that helps us to know that the median was 40,000.
Yep.
So of the 93, okay, so 40 some of them were less and 40 were more, so, okay, all right.
So if you'd like, I mean, we could jump right on that and structure sort of a steadily decrease in percentage, starting from the lowest eligible amount to the highest. And even that, I think, potentially, you know, you could go a couple of different ways with it, but we'd work with particularly Dan, who's on the Zoom as well, and our team and get you a quick summary, or do you want us to just go for it and bring you the outcome of that for a final gavel down?
If you could do a couple, I mean, using that principle, there could be some very, you know, you could start with like, okay, 100 to zero, or you could start with 75 to, you know?
Yep, absolutely.
So if you could give us a couple of scenarios, kind of using that basic principle, that would be great. I'd like to see that.
Okay.
I mean, I would think for the amount of time involved in their application that we would start with a minimum of like giving 1,000 and then go up from there.
Yeah, we can employ that as well. I don't think that'll affect more than a couple.
How many of them were under 1,000?
There's just that one business that was under 1,000.
That's what I was thinking. I was like, why would anyone spend all the time to fill this out?
That could be very impactful.
So...
The next, like, lowest amount is 2,000.
Sorry, I'm going to jump in here, and I don't think that would be ARPA-eligible. You're essentially overfunding.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
Good catch, good catch. Yeah, I think the president mentioned something about fraud yesterday, right? So let's not do that.
Oh, right. Oh, yeah. $500 of fraud. Oh, my gosh.
So never mind that.
Unintentional. So, yeah, if any numbers could be run in the next day or two, I'd be available Friday just to review, see if we can get more clarity on it, you know, maybe bring it back Monday for finalization if we need to or whatever, just to...
How do you, do you want us to just...
Work through, Greg.
Okay.
Can I just ask one question? I don't mean to complicate this, and I should have asked it earlier. It's just that there's a lot of businesses competing for a little amount of money. Is there any correlation between the size of the business and the more local employees, for example, that they're going to have? I just think about, you know, are some of the largest businesses, while they may be based here, most of their workforce is actually out of Deschutes County? And I'm not trying to think about, we don't want to help offset some of those costs, but if we want the biggest bang for the buck for Deschutes County...
Right, we want to...
Businesses and residents and employees. Is that, I don't know if that's even worthy of a factor or...
I don't think it's as much of a factor here because the ones with the biggest eligible amounts are local hotels, fitness centers, things like that. Now, Dan or Jared, correct me if that's wrong, but it seems like it's, these are mainly businesses that, because of the nature of it, unless they're part of a chain, but I haven't seen a lot of that, the chain that's headquartered here, I should say, they tend, these tend to be local employees. But do you guys agree? Yeah?
So...
And then I got a note here...
Businesses that have a brick and mortar local location and...
Yeah, and they have to be registered as based here, so that's why I said the chain thing. So you could have a chain that's based here where the predominant employees are actually not here, or some other kind of, you know, franchise, whatever kind of situation. But I don't recall a lot of that on the list that we've, we've gone through with Dan every single one of the applications, so.
Thank you.
And they all are still going concerns?
They're all still open. That's one of the eligibility criteria. So they have to be located here, still open, able to demonstrate the nexus with COVID, not just bad business practice. And also, just as a note, that this was not necessarily about losses, it was about net impact. So they might have been profitable before COVID and even profitable for part of COVID, but if it was less, that was calculated as part of the net economic impact, just to be clear. That was the formula that was set up.
Well, I'm glad to know that there's only one that had 401 under 1,000 then.
Yeah.
Yes, that's nice to know.
We're not going to overfund them.
No, we're not overfunding them, and, oh, gosh.
Maybe I could bake them a pie or something.
Ah, yeah.
We could, we could, we could take, we could take staff to, you know, employee award...
There you go.
Celebration at their establishment, something like that.
Well, just remember that when we gave out checks at Christmas time, what, two years ago, people were crying, you know, they were so appreciative, and I don't know, today they probably will take the check and put it in their fund to pay their gas bill or something, or their electric bill, because, you know, we're seeing that in our community.
Debt to keep the doors open, you know, hopefully reduce debt.
That's very, very significant, and it's really, I think you're also able to make slightly larger awards this time on average than last time, too. So I think we'll have even more gratitude, if you will.
Well, really, if there's only so many above the 500,000, the four...
So to clarify next steps, we'll go back and rerun a couple of specific examples and schedule some time with each one of you to go over those and get that to you, and then look for a next, maybe next week, sometime on one of the agendas.
The sooner the better.
Okay.
Yeah, now that we have the numbers, we've got them analyzed, if we can get it on next week's agenda, I think that would be appreciated.
Okay.
I mean, I feel badly that it's taken so long.
Thank you for the direction today.
Thank you for, thank you for parsing all this information in so many ways to get us to a good place.
And that's Jared up there on the screen with Dan and your team assisting and reviewing everything, so.
Thank you, Jared. Glad that you're at COIC.
You bet. Happy to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the second component of this agenda item, if you'd like to continue, or we can postpone until next week when we meet again, is just a review of the list, any discussion on any of the items that are eligible or any item that you might be interested in that's not on the list.
We do have that request from COBA for the internship program, 108,000, and it's with COCC.
Apprenticeship program?
Yes, yes. I know, I thought, I just, I'm looking at that, wondering if that's something that we can do? It is an internship program, and is it eligible?
I'm going to ask, I'm going to put Dan on the spot right now because I'm not sure if we've reviewed that yet, but I know he would know.
It came in on the 16th of February.
Okay.
Dan?
Yeah, I did, I did review that, and I do believe that that one is eligible under creating incentives for workforce or education, either or, so.
This is a carpenter program, and I think it's so important that we get more people trained and working, and I know that a lot of people in that industry didn't return after the crash of, you know, 2007, 8, 9. So truly, it seems like it makes sense.
So we've got apprenticeship programs being talked about from a few different angles, COCC and our East Cascades Workforce Investment Board, they have a kind of collaborative group working on industry needs also. So this will augment that, but there's also kind of the requests where we've been asked about a community benefits agreement and understanding, you know, some of the contracting. Those are for prevailing wage jobs. So as I say, I'm very supportive of this, and there's another bigger picture, something that, you know, I support bringing back around, and I've been kind of working on in the meantime also.
The way I look at it, we only have 1,385,298 left? Yeah. So this one is asking for 108,000.
Yeah. I would agree that there's sort of a bigger picture of how we are, how we as a county are trying to encourage and stimulate an apprenticeship program. So I'm, I am supportive of this request, but I also would like to kind of think about all those levers we can pull on apprenticeships at the same time, rather than one-offing them. So I don't know what our timeframe is for looking at that community benefits bidding policy, but if it's not that far off, I would love to, I would love to look at this at the same time.
So, yeah, there's, I think of two steps here for, you know, on this topic. Community benefits is an ask outside of us, and I don't know that I'm there yet, but I do support understanding the collaboration, the partnership, the apprenticeship programs being offered, you know, understanding prevailing wage jobs, open market jobs, all kinds of stuff there. So there's a whole education piece before even thinking that there's a community benefit agreement that we'd be stepping into. So I'm just saying, let's prep for it. So for that, for the, yeah, for the Builders Association Apprenticeship Program, it's basically going to offer people into the community, into the, you know, workforce empowered with apprenticeship stipend, or, you know, so we're going to kind of help pay for some apprenticeships while they're probably coming up speed working also. So I'm excited for it, really, so I don't, if we fund this now, I mean, I don't think that's going to take away from anything else.
Oh, I don't think it will either, and if you do remember, the 125,000 we spent on COCC's childcare program is already impacting the community, so successful, you know, they added Spanish to that program, and, you know, I'm just, anything we can do with the program, COCC, I think is a win-win for the community. So would you make, would you make a motion then to support this 108,000?
Yeah, out of ARPA dollars, I would support, I move funding the Central Oregon Builders Association Apprenticeship Program ask.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Mr. DeBon?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
There you go.
So the ones will come back then in, what, two weeks?
I got one more. And it may not be ARPA dollars, but it may be, so there was, remember Commissioner Chang, you and I went out and did sage grouse tour with Ed Keith last year.
And Stu Garrett, yeah.
What's that?
And Stu Garrett.
Yeah, so Dr. Garrett was there showing us around. I stopped at the Milliken, you know, property, the privately owned property that has land used for RV spots or whatever, which is undeveloped, but I stopped there on the way out. We went to Brothers to go check out the sage grouse habitat in the area. And I forget if the, there's the post office, I don't know if it was, I think it was at Brothers, but it might have been back at Milliken, I forget which one.
I think it's at Brothers.
And I stopped and said hi to the person, the one person that was there, and, you know, this is about seven months, eight months later, she had mentioned to her partner that, well, the commissioner stopped by a year ago and said that maybe we could be partners if there's RV spots. All the way out at Hampton is another spot for 15. It's a little store, Hampton store, the next one out, and it's got land use approval for 15 spots, and it was closed years ago, and, you know, I don't know if it was, you'd have to ask them about the scenario of when it got closed, I don't know the facts, but they asked, you know, hey, is the county interested in helping us financially just to get it reopened? I said, well, I'll ask. So Greg, you know, maybe you've talked to him on the phone, but I just wanted you to hear about it, both the other commissioners. You know, it may or may not be ARPA, but also it could be transient room tax or not. I mean, I'm just saying, it's, it's an exciting idea.
Total of 15 spots?
The land use associated with it is for existing, you know, the land use approves 15, I don't know what it looks like, I've never stopped by to look at it, but if you look at Zoom and dial, it's all right there, and it's, yeah, it's available.
I would want to have a better sense of the market demand, you know, for that, for that location, before we committed a substantial amount of funding to it.
Well, yeah, as I say, I'm just bringing it up today, I don't know exactly, you know, so it'd be interesting to learn a bit about the history, you know, has it been opened or does it need to be developed still? Because, you know, there's land use associated with it, I don't know the status. Just sharing.
One idea I just...
Pretty exciting.
I was thinking how expensive gas is going to be if we go up to, what is it, 140 or whatever? Yeah, I mean, it's not looking good, but we do have that bus route, you know, our bus funding, so we could maybe even run a bus out there if people couldn't afford to drive back and forth.
This would be 15 spots for, you know, overnight traveling people. This wouldn't be...
You don't think it would be...
It wouldn't be, it would be full-on commercial market. I don't think it's any...
By the time you get out there, people could, if people are looking for social services, they'd be just as well to go to Burns as they would...
Yeah, so I'm not advocating.
Come here.
This isn't a social service thing. But just an idea, we'll learn more about it, I just want to mention it.
Yeah, and so that's where, that's where my, my interest in the kind of the market demand, because it's, I mean, there are, you know, there is substantial tourism, recreational travel in that corridor between here and Burns, but I think a lot of those people are just going to Burns. So I, you know, I wouldn't want to use public funds to invest in something that, you know, to try to make something happen that doesn't have the traction.
And it may, it may not be our domain, it may be visitors association, it may be just industry partners or whatever. I've, you know, I mentioned it here, so you're thinking about it, which is all we need to be, you know, start in the process.
I mean, you know, we are talking about doing feasibility studies for, you know, campground, so I mean, if you wanted to put that one in the hopper for, you know, for consideration as part of that.
Well, it's already privately owned and land use is there, so I mean, this is more, you know, they're just asking, is there any startup dollars for our existing operation that has gone defunct? You know, as I say, I don't know if it was because of COVID or not specifically, but yeah. And we know that there's a lot of, you know, van life, tourist-type people, so Central Oregon Visitors Association can provide, are there amenities? You know, as in, if you park in there, you spend two nights there, is there a hike to go on or bird watching or, you know, sage grouse hunting?
Yeah.
Maybe not that.
I don't think so, but I don't think you said that, did you? No.
Well, no, you can still get a license for sage grouse, is my understanding.
Southeast, there are some spots where the population is so healthy that people do get permits, but...
Yeah, we'll look at it.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess, you know, just kind of as a general principle, if we, if we're going to invest in a private enterprise, I'd like to see their business plan, which would include that market analysis. And, you know, if it's, if it's a viable business plan and there's certain kinds of public needs that are being met, then, you know, I'm open to the idea of using some color of money to support that.
Okay, Greg, are we good then on coming back?
Yes. So we'll get on next week's, on Wednesday's agenda, and we'll have those, we'll run a few scenarios with you, or we'll run the scenarios, and then I'll get those to you by the end of the week, and I'll look to see if we have some, maybe some time where I can visit with you for 15 or 20 minutes.
You know, I would actually, if Dave Givens has time to just take a quick peek at it, I really liked his analysis when we did the grant funding... at it, I really liked his analysis when we did the grant funding before, so I know he'll, I think he'll be back from vacation, and I, I just would, I think it would be nice if Dave could look at it, too. He has a real good sense for the community and what we can do to make a difference.
Yep, great.
So just another note, the broadband infrastructure, which we have invested in, so the regional broadband needs assessment and action plan, there's an effort at Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council, kind of like this, they're, they're convening a bunch of folks together for the broadband needs analysis, and Joe Sidonia and myself are attending these meetings, I haven't attended one yet, he's, there's only been one, but yeah, it's coming around, we're going to do that, analysis of kind of that backbone infrastructure, you know, not the retail as much as, if we had fiber between here and there, is that going to help, is what I think of, and we'll learn more as we do it.
Okay.
So this is something, in addition to the COIC analysis, that's, that's.
Oh, no, it is the COIC, I'm just referring to, Joe Sidonia and myself are involved with that, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you. Okay, item number 15, Youth Villages Incorporated?
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, Greg. Shannon, Brister should be, there she is.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Shannon.
Shannon Brister-Rogus, Shute County Healthcare Program Manager for Comprehensive Care for Youth and Families. Two weeks in a row, you get me. So today, I'm here to talk about extending our contract with Youth Villages for the CATS program. The CATS program has been in our community since around 2017, and they target youth who are at risk of hospitalization or who have been hospitalized. This grant, this funding comes as a combination of Oregon Health Authority funding, as well as some funds through our system of care expansion grant for a total of $315,000. The idea of this program is that youth are quickly diverted from the hospital instead of languishing in care with a coordinated plan to safely divert them back to the community with safety planning and ongoing follow-up from, from a clinician for up to 45 days if they're not already connected in care, or if they are connected in care to coordinate with that clinical team to help support the youth within the community. The Shute County is one of the first programs to actually incorporate this into our crisis stabilization center, so we actually can receive referrals prior to going to the hospital through our mobile crisis team or the crisis stabilization center, which has really proved to be a positive thing. Actually, 33% of the referrals come through the crisis stabilization center versus the hospital itself. And just this last year, only 6% came from the emergency room in totality. So we're, we're trying, through the use of CATS, we're not, we're trying to identify youth early to avoid the hospitalization altogether, pretty critical role within our community.
How many youth did you, did the program work with last year, do you know? Do you have that number?
Yeah, 45 youth last year.
Well, it's great to have such a focused service for, you know, for when, when it comes around and somebody really needs this kind of support, the family, the, the youth themselves, so it's good to know that we're doing this.
Yeah, one of the cool things, we just got some data from youth, and, I mean, from CATS program last year, is that on average, 10% of cases that go to the hospital return to the hospital, and our CATS program actually only had 1% return to the hospital this last year. So not only are we diverting from the hospital, but if they go to the hospital and we meet their, meet them, we're able to keep them out for the future. So it's, it's a pretty important program, we really appreciate our Youth Villages partners.
That was exactly what I was going to ask about. So, I mean, this, this approach, you know, early diversion and, you know, kind of treatment in, in home, or, you know, not in the, you know, not in the inpatient psychiatric setting, it sounds like, I mean, just, you know, my impression from what I know, it sounds like it would be an effective approach, but I was, I was hoping you could share any kind of, your data or evidence you have that, you know, could, could support that, and, and that, that 10% versus 1%, that's a, that's a great statistic. Do you have other kind of information to, to share that, that, you know, that demonstrates the effectiveness of this approach?
Yeah, I sure, I sure do. Last year, on average, the CATS program was able to respond to clients at risk or who were hospitalized within three hours, and that's a, a pretty big, we're talking a pretty big footprint, so you've got the Shute County Emergency Department as well as, so Ben, Ben and Ben, and so they were able to meet with families within three hours. So if you've ever been in the emergency room, having somebody that comes and meets with you and helps you divert within three hours is a pretty quick timeline. When they meet with somebody, they do, they complete a risk assessment, a safety plan, and some legal means counseling, and over 68% of those that, that have received this support have a home visit within three, three days. So not only are they diverted back to the community, but then they have this in-home support within three days, and during COVID times, that's, that's pretty, that's pretty quick and faster than the state average. So let's see, what else can I say about this in terms of statistics? I think one of the biggest things is just the coordination that, that Youth Villages does with helping get, getting families connected to care. So they're either already in care, or as a result of this intervention, they get connected to care, and 87% of families, once they discharge from, from the CATS program, have a primary care provider or have some form of follow-up care. So obviously, we have some families that still choose not to, but that's a pretty high percent that CATS is able to help make sure that families have and know about the supports in our community that are available to them.
Great, thanks, Shannon.
I have a whole bunch of other statistics if you want, I'd be happy to send your way.
Oh, I love statistics, but, okay, my question is, the Christie School, is that the one that's located in Lake Oswego then? Do we have one?
Yeah, that's, that's where they're, they start out of, that's where they originated. They're here, and they're located, Youth Villages is located here in Central Oregon, that's just their main headquarters.
Okay, and we apparently, my numbers from Holly, 217 kids were in the stabilization center this last year. Are any of those 45 in that count, or are these on, on addition to the 217?
No, those are in the same count.
In the same count?
Those are ones, so our, our crisis stabilization center would, our, our crisis team is always involved with any referrals that go to Youth Villages. We look to see if we can meet their needs in the community or the leash restrictive setting, and then if their needs are above that, then it refers to the CATS program. CATS can only take up to 10 people at a time, so they all route through, through Holly's team.
Okay, all right, so that's good to know, that it's 217, and we don't have to add 45 on top of that. Thank you.
Right, yeah.
Is there any more questions? Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of Youth Villages Incorporated's agreement, and that's document number 2022-015.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Mr. DeBon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So thank you. Now, what are you going to be on next week on our agenda?
I know, right?
You're on a roll. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Commissioners.
Thanks, Shannon.
Okay, so legislative, oh my gosh.
Can we take a minute, a break for just a moment?
Oh, sure, a break, for a minute, sounds like a good idea. I wanted to pick up on our legislative this morning.
Commissioners, this is Phil, I'm sorry I'm joining you by phone today, I'm just literally walking back and forth to the Capitol, and so I do have our updated report in front of me, and also ready to give kind of a status update as well, but I just wanted to check in with Whitney and the other team to see if you guys just want me to go for it, or if there's any other updates that needs to go first.
Is there anyone on that needs to go first? I don't believe I see anyone.
We just want to know what's going on, play-by-play.
Right. I don't see any representatives on the line. Is there anyone, Laura?
We don't have any.
So Phil, it's up to you.
Gotcha, I was going to say, I'd be shocked if we did today, because the current status is they are on the road to adjournment, and so full ways and means has tentatively had their last meeting, capital construction wrapped up ideally, there's, they are in recess in case of any other emergencies that might come up where a bill needs to get voted on. That kind of is an indicator, though, that the other subcommittees of Ways and Means do not meet again, because if they left capital construction open, the bills would funnel through them first. And so capital construction wrapped up this week by passing the, the capital construction bills, the bonding bills, bonding authorization, and the awaited budget reconciliation bill. The budget reconciliation bill was the big topic, the rest of the bills passed really with a little conversation, but for the Shute County purposes, our budget, the budget reconciliation bill, I believe, was, took care, was good to us as well. That, in that bill, we saw an allocation to multiple capital project requests. The first was 1.5 million for the capital, the county courthouse renovation, and then there is also a $3 million distribution to the healthcare hub of South Dushut County for the Lapine Community Health, Lapine Community Health Center as well. So those two were included in there. In addition, and I did say for the, the Dushut County Circuit Court renovation and the expansion project, and then in addition, there was also funding for some bills that we had on our list. Commissioner Chang, specifically, there was $7 million, so the full ask as the bill was passed for wildlife crossings, that was included in the budget reconciliation as well. They are going to require some additional rulemaking at ODOT to figure out the distribution of those funds. I'm, I'm confident that's going to stay within the agency, but there might be a conversation of where do those crossings get placed within the state. But ultimately, and then there was also some additional funding that was for grand jury recording. Folks remember, several sessions ago, they started the pilot project with three to five counties, I believe it was three, the Shute County being one of them, and the concern was that that would become an unfended mandate to the counties. Still looks like they're going down that path, but it just seems that they continue to put a little bit of money towards it each session until it expands to statewide. And so there was, I believe, just north of $300,000 in there for that as well. I guess I just want to pause there to see if there's any specific questions about the budget reconciliation bill, it was a very large one, north of $5 billion, but there, I guess that it's okay, Commissioners, I'd pause there to see if there's any specific questions on that before jumping to more specific bills.
There are two other items of significant interest to the county that I'm, we didn't ask you to track, but I'm just curious if you, if you know about them off the top of your head. One was for OSU Cascade's Innovation Center, was, was that included in that budget reconciliation bill, or is that somewhere separate?
I did not see it in the bills, it would be probably more in the capital construction or bond authorization bills, I will go double-check, but I don't believe I saw it. For the sake of not holding up this meeting, I didn't want to try to do it while I'm talking, but I will check that immediately. I know I did see the list where OSU in general got a few allocations for like, I think I saw a million dollars for like the B project, things like that, but I didn't see OSU Cascades, but I'll double-check for that, Commissioner.
Thanks, and, and then the other one was this, you know, Core Three project that we, we just heard this morning that they, they thought, they thought was pretty firm.
It was 9.5 million.
$9.5 million, but maybe that's also in the capital construction bill as opposed to the budget reconciliation bill?
No, that is in there, I'm reading it right here, various $1 general fund appropriations to DAS for the approval of distribution for the following entities, and number eight is listed at 9.5 for the distribution to the Central Oregon Intergovernment Council for a Core Three.
Great, so, great, thank you.
Not a problem.
So what happened with Ag overtime, Phil?
It did pass last night, yesterday on Ag overtime, they spent more than three hours on the floor debating it, but it did pass mostly on party line vote, which was expected, that was expected, and it is proceeding forward. There is, I believe, some dollars allocated in that budget reconciliation. There is, I believe, some dollars allocated in that budget reconciliation to help offset initial costs. My understanding of that bill, and I will give you the staff measure summary of it, is that it is a phased-in approach and that there were tax credits available to offset some of that. But I believe I saw some other funding opportunities for those industries that maybe are hit a little bit harder than others. That was kind of a gesture of understanding not all Ag is the same. Some are more, just the industry within the industry is very different. So I think they were trying to make sure that that allocation was in place as well.
Phil, do you know what happened to the carbon sequestration package? I had heard that the bill had stalled out, that they were going to try to make some of the studies still happen through some other channels?
Yeah, no, let me look that one up. So that kind of, yes and no. It stalled, yes. Rather than, but then it broke into multiple conversations. One of them became part of the REACH code, which is another bill that was running parallel. That one got changed into a work group for the interim. But to your point, Commissioner, the intention, I believe, there is that there will be a green fund made available where it could help public facilities basically update their building stock to be more resilient. And again, the goal to bring these buildings, at least initially public buildings, to net zero. And so that was in a bill form. That was part of the carbon conversation a little bit, or the carbon conversation bogged down. And then they were all the same advocacy groups. So all of these bills that had stalled became one big conversation. And so you have that moving forward during the interim. You have the carbon sequestration, I believe, stalled a little bit and took on more of the form within the Private Forest Accord. And I don't understand how that occurred, but I just know that the other bills were having struggles and attention and effort started going towards those. I believe there is going to be an interim work group on the sequestration as well. I've not seen that in paper form, but that was just a general agreement that this is a bigger conversation. They want to see if the governor's going to be taking more executive orders before the next full session. And in addition, if they do sequestration, they needed time to figure out whether there's going to be state financing behind that to be able, and would that affect the budget in a bigger way than they were trying to address in the time span they had for the short session? So that was a really long answer, but I became very caught up in every, all of those bills with the same proponents and opponents. They all got kind of caught up in the same conversation.
Thank you.
So when you mentioned that they're aiming for closure, is that earlier than Sunday night or Monday or whatever?
Yeah, they can go all the way till the 7th, but I believe, I mean, what's stalling right now is the full reading of the bills. That is what's taking the time, given the committees, the only committees meeting anymore are rules, revenue, and if Ways and Means needs to. Anytime, we should be seeing that signee die bill pop up in rules. If they weren't reading the bills in full, I would expect they probably could probably be getting out of here either today or tomorrow. The goal is to be done Friday, and that's what I've heard from both sides and both chambers. And so they will be, so that they don't have to come back for one day the next week.
So Phil, I noticed that Lake and I believe, wasn't it Crook County, both received 2 million for their fairgrounds. Did other counties receive that kind of funding too?
They did. So that was part of, there were several counties, most of them far Eastern Oregon counties. And to be candid, part of that was, I think they just didn't pick county specifics. This was part of a package that those counties brought into session coming in. And so again, I apologize if it sounds like I was being disingenuous on our last legislative update when we were talking about, is it too late to get something in? At that time, it was because LFO was already doing the paperwork. The books were closed. But that request was put in on the very front of the session. And I believe there was almost all of the far Eastern Oregon counties from Yumitila, I actually think maybe even Morrow County got some, kind of drawing that line down. Each of them got a million dollars, I think, just to do infrastructure. And so, and that was also tied to, I think, some of those folks that were negotiating the $100 million rule infrastructure package. So originally, that wasn't going to get funded as a bill on standalone, but as that infrastructure package conversation moved forward in session, they just moved that into that $100 million conversation.
Well, I know they can probably use that funding, so that's really good to hear. Do you know what happened with the D-Sell?
Okay.
Did the D-Sell bill, I noticed Chris Todi is on our screen. Did the D-Sell bill end up disappearing or what happened with that?
Became a budget note, and I can pull that up, but I know you referenced somebody else on the call. So if they would like to take a call on that, I can pull, I have the budget note.
Okay. Chris, do you want to address what happened with D-Sell?
Kind of curious myself. It was kind of caught in the wash towards the end of the session there. And I don't really have anything to update the board on. I would like to fill to hopefully clear that up for us. Other than I heard it was headed towards a work group and not necessarily anything that would affect current operations.
Okay.
He's darn near on the mark there. And so, yes, in the last hour, that fell apart in negotiations. It got turned into a budget note in the budget reconciliation. So that currently reads that DEQ and ODOT are directed to report back to the Joint Committee on Transportation and the appropriate committee by December 1st, 2022, with an analysis of existing incentives available to support the transition to zero emissions, medium, and heavy duty transportation fleets. The agencies are further directed to research incentives offered in other states regarding diesel incentives and provide recommendations on expanding or creating incentives to support businesses in the transition to zero emissions, medium, and heavy duty vehicles. And this effort should include an analysis on incentives for both vehicles and electrical charging or other fuel infrastructure. And so we should be, we're given a deadline December 1st. My mind says that coincides when probably legislative requests are due for the next session, if they want it to be read the first day of next session on February 1st. So you could probably be seeing those reports come in and that would likely, those recommendations may be turned into a bill for the next session.
Commissioner Chang, just for staff, I was trying to track Phil through bill tracker when you made your comment or your question about OSU Cascade's funding. Was that specific to the Innovation District or separate and apart from that?
I had just read a little bit about that Innovation District piece, so I was curious about it.
Yeah, and it looks like in House Bill 5202, there is $10 million for the Innovation District project, which is probably consistent with what you read, but just flagging it in that bill for you.
So that is in the budget reconciliation bill?
Correct.
Good to know. Thank you.
And so that will be, that's Bonding Authorization Bill. 5202's budget reconciliation, just so that if you're looking for the language, that would be the Bonding Authorization Bill over there. Well, Commissioners, if there aren't any other questions, do you just want me to run through our highlights of our bill tracker? Or would you like me to rerun that this evening? They're doing four sessions all day today. And then that would be, this evening would include anything that happened on the floor? How would you like, at this point, the bills that are moving forward have already been out of committee. We've reported on those in our last meetings. It's just a matter of, they've been sitting on the third reading list because they're reading every bill in full. So if they made it out of committee by our last meeting, it's likely that they're just going to the floor for a vote, and they're still sitting there.
There's two ways we could go here. We could possibly just reschedule this for more detail, you know, right after the session. Because I mean, I don't know that there's, I'm just proposing that because I don't know that there's any sway in anything at this point in time.
So when is our next legislative meeting set up for?
I think this is, well, let me look. I think this may be the last one we have scheduled, but we can certainly add and we typically do.
I thought we had one more.
We have one more?
But I'm just saying, if we go through a list right now, there's no real advocacy to be done. So it's more analysis at this time.
I think.
That is correct, Commissioner.
Yeah, I think, I'm not, and I could be overlooking it just in a quick glance, but I'm not seeing one on the upcoming calendar. But we can certainly either at a regular business meeting or separate and apart as a legislative update schedule a wrap-up with the board, which we typically do.
After next week.
So we don't have anything on the 9th, then? Because originally, wasn't the session was going to be over on the 8th?
You know, Commissioner, I need to delve into my notes. I'm kind of just looking high level.
Okay, I know I have it on another.
You're probably accurate.
Well, no, I just can kind of remember. It's out there. So, okay. No, Phil, I think we're probably good. I'm glad that, I'm glad that we're getting 3 million for the Lapine Community Health Center. I wonder if we would have asked for four, if we would have gotten four, but okay.
Oh, everybody says that. Should I ask for more?
Well, no, if you're talking about $5 billion, you're talking about 5 billion, a million.
Well, and I have, you know, let's get back to an economy where people are paying for a fairer service or product and they're paying taxes and everything. This is kind of echo of all the big federal investments right now, which is good. I mean, I'm not, you can't be opposed to the money coming through, but you know, this is big money from, you know, possibly our kids' debt, you know, that's what I'm referring to.
Right. You mean the 30 trillion debt and the inflation and, yeah, what we're looking at. So, okay. So, okay, I'm sure we're going to have a meeting in the future, Phil.
We will make ourselves available as whenever you call on us. And I don't know why, I just want to note one more because the last two minutes, the mattress program bill also passed and funding associated with it too. Sorry, our one department had asked me that twice, and I keep forgetting to mention that, so that has moved forward as well.
That's not on the line.
Chad will be thrilled. We will let him know.
Okay, sorry. It did not become an unfended mandate.
That's really good to know.
Perfect. Thank you, Commissioners. And as I'm reading through all these budget stuff, if anything else pops up that I forgot to add, I'll make sure that I get that to Nick and Whitney and Laura, and that gets right on to you.
Okay. Sounds like a good plan. Thank you.
Have a great day.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, so we actually now have an executive session. Should we go to that now or should we do any other items right before it?
If the board wanted to take other items, it might give staff the chance to, we'll have a number of staff getting on for executive session and potentially coming downstairs, so that might be a nice sequencing if that works.
Okay. So other items yesterday?
I did.
I just wanted, I mentioned this to Nick this morning. I know last year, we did a pilot project with the Forest Service down in Chinahat, and I was hoping we could do a similar arrangement with the Forest Service in Sisters with Ian Reed. They're working on doing some cleanup. And anyway, and you know, we do have, what is it, four officers from Deschutes County Sheriff's that do work in Sisters now. So kind of a community effort cleanup.
So I got a couple of updates. So I was able to dial in yesterday morning for Eastern Oregon legislative call with Senator Finley. Representative Crop was on the line, and he notified that, yeah, that 9.5 was in there for Core Three, which was exciting. Also, the Ag overtime bill is, yeah, very, just kind of right down the middle partisan. You know, it's frustrating for a lot of folks to say, you know, we've got a growing season and, yeah. I mean, I'm not going to get into politics, but yeah, that was one of the big topics, yeah.
And when you have to pick the blueberries.
I know.
The blueberries. Yeah. And I, yeah, I remember working for my mom once, and it was like 10 o'clock that night, which she finally brought us her dinner, but that was family.
But there's only a few weeks a year where you just got to rock it. So, and I mean, we used to do that with hay, right? I mean, I would be working here and I'd go cut a field till 10 o'clock at night. I mean, you just got to do it and, you know, and I would always, generally, cost me more to make my own hay than go to buy it, but that's another story.
Not today's work.
I know. That was a different thing. Okay. So then Eastern Oregon Counties Association on Monday morning. Are you going to dial into that possibly?
It will be my turn, won't it?
Well, so Commissioner Chang, you know, would you want to be involved with this? This is the EOC A board meeting. Probably be very much a legislative debrief just like this. I haven't really followed, I think the agenda might have been emailed to us.
Been happy to let you two cover that and keep me updated at these meetings, you know, during our board meetings on what's going on at EOC A. I mean, if there's a need for me to participate, then.
Well, as I say, and then, I mean, it's been valuable because you remember I sat in on a meeting and they talked about coordination for an hour. And then I came here and you're like, well, coordination is this, and there's different views. So it's valuable to compare notes on this, that is. Okay, well, so this is the meeting, though, not Tuesday morning meeting. This is a Monday, 10 o'clock EOC A board meeting with Paul Anderson.
Yes.
You're going to dial into that?
I hope so. It's on Zoom. I know it is, and she knows now she sent out the Zoom, so.
Okay. Just making sure.
Some kind of conflict.
I was able to join the Ready Board Meeting this morning, but last thing, Ready, Redmond Economic Development. There was a good group of people around the table. We had been meeting virtually all year, so this is the first time we were all in the room. We were at Redmond City Hall with masks, but I think everybody's looking forward to the masks to come off at that board meeting. But there's like 20 something people there.
Oh, good. Great. How exciting.
So one thing I wanted to report back was that the Public Health Advisory Board met yesterday. And one of the things that they pointed out was that they had not done their health heroes recognition process in a couple of years. And, you know, I just, you know.
Well, heroes were so busy.
Yes. Yeah. I mean, and, you know, what I said to them was, you know, if there, if there was ever a time where people have been working heroically and that, you know, it would be great to give them public recognition for that, it would be right now. And they said, well, part of the problem is also that we're really short-staffed and we literally, you know, don't have the bandwidth to organize an outdoor in-person event for, you know, 25 people or something like that. And so I told them that I would ask, I would check in with the admin division, communications staff, and see if there might be a way for us to help with, you know, organizing an event like that, you know, primarily because I think it has really important communications benefits for the county and, you know, the people who are nominated and then featured as health heroes. I think we want to really show a lot of support for those people and just remind the community that there have been a whole lot of people working double, triple time for the last two years. So I, you know, I just put that forward to staff as a request. I was trying to peek, pop my head in the door over the last 24 hours, but I just kept missing people. So I'll just say it in public right now.
Well, and that sounds like just a nice project with a start and end that, you know, I mean, if we support that, and I do, let's go do it, yeah.
That's great. We're certainly happy to engage and plug in there. And we will work with Tom and public health staff to engage with the committee in that process. And you're right, it has been, when you said that, flagged my memory that I think it has, we have had a gap. So we're certainly happy to help support that.
Thank you.
Yes, a big gap. So, I'll appropriate. And then I think there was a new promotion too within the Health Department. Wasn't it Emily Friedland? It just was announced that she has a major promotion. So congratulations, Emily. And I read all about her family, and they live in Sisters. So, sweet. Okay, is there anything else in other items? Nick, did you have anything you needed to say?
I don't, Commissioners, thank you.
Okay, all right. So let's go to executive then. Thank you, Laura.